And that's good.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. So there's a meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting is properly posted in the normal voting places. And I am looking for the motion to move again. Okay. Still waiting a second. Is there any discussion? In all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motions carried. We are on to the minutes. We've got from the June 29 meeting at 6:05.
I'll make a motion to review minutes of Monday, June 29 at 6:00 on open press.
Okay, we have a motion at second. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes? In all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motions carried. We're on to the financial report and bill listing.
Is this technically my house and treasure?
I do believe so. Well, I don't know. It's actually technically your job.
I can't. I'm not used to open again.
Not what you do it. A lot of numbers.
Okay. I'll make a motion through the process of listing general funds. Payrolls are composite number 900052201 through 900052303 in the amount of $138,000.43. Wire transfers for payroll liabilities wire number 2019003290200010 in the amount of $212,295.99. Total payroll of $351,222.22. Account table set number 54314 in the amount of $87,625.75. Credit card transaction numbers 062020 in the amount of $40,684.75. Engage for deposit numbers 19200019620210000227.75. For total account table of $129,023.55. Total dispersment of $480,000.4823,000.75.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second. I, Katie. Are there any questions, concerns about the financial report and bill list? Okay. And all that approved, signify by saying aye.
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 All at the same time, motions carried. We are on to the delegation to be heard. We have one person, Mr. David Landes. Would you like to address us?
Yeah.
Could I just stay here?
Yes, sure.
All right.
Just wanted to get some things out there for discussion. Think about coming school year in a school course, still dealing with your own players. All concerns there. So my biggest concern, just how it's gonna be handled. A lot of talk for what's best for kids, you know, sending them back to school and all that. With their adventures with the teachers and admin. Kids may get sick less than adults, but they're going to see rooms adults, ask them, ask family. Kids could also pass it to other family members as well. Recently was a meeting to discuss the concern of the culture here, burden and not taking the necessary precautions to protect teachers and the administration would fit into that conversation. This word that the decisions are being made based on politicians in the political level instead of science. We had the CDC guidelines saying to return to traditional schooling with in-person classes when involved with the highest risk for COVID-19 to the spread. And even in-person classes with students spaced apart and presented shared materials for categories is leading to more risk. From New York, where they got from the state, we had more than 75 Department of Education employees die from COVID-19. 31 teachers, 28 career professionals, food staffs, food service staffers, guidance counselors, two administrators, two facility staff, two school aides, parent coordinator, computer technology specialists. Then we had Israel, when they fully reopened schools, COVID-19 outbreak swept through their classrooms. They had 130 cases in school that led officials to post dozens of schools where students sat. Closer home, I'm sure everyone's heard, Menominee Falls, it shut down summer sports program. We had a bunch of cases with football team, students contracting COVID. And then I've heard recently, local field hockey team having multiple cases. And actually, just before I came over here, I learned, listened to fire department. Someone with COVID, so now they're involved requiring this. So I guess one of the things I just wanted to say, if kids and teachers are gonna need a class, I'm just hoping and thinking that masks should be the bare minimum of safety precautions. Despite, and there's people who don't believe, despite what they believe, masks can truly reduce transmission all over the world. There's no, should be a hesitation or requiring things where it has. Doing so does not violate HIPAA laws, any constitutional rights. It's not any different than requiring a dress code that should be understood as a necessary safety procedure for a whole pandemic. CDC and DPI all state that face coverage should be worn and social distancing is difficult to accomplish. If you spend any time in school, everyone knows social distancing is the biggest challenge. Website of the United States courts talking about constitutional rights. I'm not sure which ones are being looked at, thought about, like looking at fourth and the fifth amendment. Fourth amendment deals with protecting people from unreasonable searches and seizures. Fifth amendment governs criminal cases, due process of law and things like that. So neither HIPAA nor the fourth or fifth amendment apply to individuals or business owners. So there's claims that are certain. Kind of more, you know, violating constitutional rights is, doesn't seem to be getting far there. I guess my biggest thing is just how this says, I just, this whole thing, I just want people to use their level head during the pandemic. The one thing I was thinking about is if you were to ask a medical professional to go into a room, say like 30 kids during a pandemic, you know, they would think, well, yeah, mask, they all need a mask, I need face covering, I need this, that. And we're talking to senior teachers, like nothing. That's very concerning, scary, putting on a risk like that for six to seven hours without protecting. The lowest risk for spread, of course, according to the CDC is virtual. I know there's lots of conspiracy around that. It's not ideal. But we're not in an ideal situation. I guess that's my biggest, we're in this, we're stuck in this right now. And I have to find the best way to protect our kids and to put them. You know, I work at Fly Surf, obviously we're at Fly Surf. But we have no plans to go back into the office anytime soon. I mean, I think in September, we're doing checkpointing. And I'm sure we're not going to be going back because working person has been working so well. And most corporations are going this way into the office because it's not worth the risk. Again, I still want this to be a matter of like what politicians want to be, science leading the way. We are a school, right? Teach science. And just the thing that I fear is that if we're not careful, something should happen to a student, teacher, administrator, a family member, then we're all going to regret that, not taking any precautions that are necessary. That's it. I know the law. Thank you.
Did anybody else want to make a report? We, well, maybe. Okay, Dean, I did not get any emails either. Okay, yep, that's right. Okay, we are on to. Mr. Report, we have no donations. Deal with that. And then we are on to personnel action. We have a contract to.
Sure, we have, but two, we have letter of appointment, recommendation for Jennifer Peterson to become our next district administrative assistant to work in the primary school business office, district office, as well as a great reader for Merton's Primary School. We did have a team of central office administrators and things like that come together to be interviewed nine or 10 people for the position and Jennifer was her top candidate. So Jennifer comes to us with 15 plus years at administrative assistant level. The most recent being with a mayoral office in the suburbs of Chicago. She is moving up to the area to, and is going to be a member of the, her children are going to be going to Arrowhead. So she's a member of our community. But she's also spent three years as a special education instructional assistant. So she's very familiar with, mostly at the middle school level, but down into the primary school at times too as well. So very familiar with school settings. And like I was telling her, I said, you never know, all of a sudden you need you in your classroom and outside. And she's like all for that too. So, so you see Jennifer Peterson's letter of appointment there. And the other contract we are bringing forward is our business manager's contract. We did meet as some school board members, administrative teams as to look for that. We did have four members, four interviews, three of them, one of them didn't show up. So we have three, but April Farley is, we are recommending to move forward to the board for full approval. April has three years of experience in school business offices, Oak Creek, Kettle Marine and Carbon Lakeside. So she is a certified business official through UW-Whitewater and excited to get this going. So assuming the board does act on April's contract, she would be starting April 3rd. So get going right after that. So I guess looking for two motions. One to approve the letter of appointment for Jennifer Peterson and the second motion to approve the business manager contract for April Farley.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of appointment for Jennifer Peterson.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion at second. Is there any discussion? In all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All, all at the same time, motions carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for April Farley for the business manager.
We have a motion and a second. Katie, any discussion? In all favor say aye.
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 All at the same time, motions carried. We are on to the information part for our administration.
Sure, we'd like to update the community on our progress towards the intermediate school remodel. And we have had, again, several conversations. The most recent was a, just an individual conversation with our core team, which is made up of eight teachers, administrators, school board members to make some more solid recommendations to the UA. And we have moved forward with a possible proposal. We are right now soliciting information and feedback from our core team to then move forward to our visionary team and to ultimately hopefully bring something to the school board at the end of August. So hopefully, if everything goes well, we will have a proposal, a possible cost estimate as well as a new design for our possible intermediate school 75 sections just in this area. The office, the fifth grade, our cafeteria, kitchen area, to really kind of bring that to life. The team has, given our budget that we're looking at as approximately $2 million, just to focus in on the 75 section. We do have plans as kind of a general figure of scope and sequence to see what could possibly happen in the five, six, seven, eight. As this remodel would take the fifth grade classrooms, which are currently on our softball, and put them back to near the sixth grade area of the library. So hopefully, some people will be coming to the board for a full approval to enter into phase two, which would be basically creating those construction documents for a possible remodel starting in March or April of next school year, or of this upcoming school year. So that's pretty much meant where we stand for the intermediate school remodel. So hopefully, something coming forward to the board. I'm going to do it on that core team is Katie and Phil. So we will be presenting something to the visionary team, which includes all the school board members here coming up there in short. Other than everything will go properly into the reopen.
Okay, so we're on, they reported as a policy committee.
Sure, the policy committee met a week ago. And what you have in front of you in the board packet is basically a full scrub of some updates to some legal legal language, added some pandemic language, make sure that all the language is tight all the way from pandemic to furlough to any possibilities that might have to occur, given what is going on or what might be happening in the future. So with that, the main, three main changes that we kind of came about as from a legal standpoint. The first one was our probationary period for, right now we have probationary period set for three years for our teachers. But our instructional, everybody else has a probationary period of one from our support staff and things like that. So with that, we would like to make that consistent for a consistent three years of probation for all employee groups which probation falls underneath. The other recommendation from the policy team would be to remove the specialist amount of hours, the 28 hour, you know, max for a specialist, and that's basically underneath art, music, by nowhere else in our employee and we can't identify prep time or any other compilation for a core teacher, a first grade teacher, wherever it might be. So for consistency, removing that was a recommendation from our media team as well. The other piece was in particular, as we take a look at this upcoming year, was our teacher hours. Right now, our teacher hours are each 15 to 415. We do know that we did pass a staff calendar that aligned with two contractual days coming into Wednesday. So we can start early at 7:45. But the big thing is, is when you start to think about meeting the needs of all of our learners, some of our students aren't going to be able to possibly come on campus. Particularly if they have a high risk for a health concern or just a normal family concern. And if we may be able to meet their IEPs, LIBOR fours or whatever individual service plans they might have, it may be before or after kids come through our doors. So just to make sure that we had as much flexibility, obviously we continue to work with our staff, making sure that they're properly notified, but just in case we needed to have a child come in at 7:00 AM or 7:30 or 7:45, to be able to have that flexibility for us to plan to meet human needs of our kids. So that's really where those three main changes came from, but the rest of it just is basically updated people language. And this is the first reading. The last reading would be, you have a meeting coming up here on August 3rd to approve the reopening plans possibly, as well as, we'll talk a little bit about Title IX as well.
So, sorry, I haven't.
They're for the policy.
Then we're on to new business.
We're doing, we're doing discussion of that later, right?
Yep, we do discussion of that later. And our new business, yep, you got it.
Okay, we're on to the new business. We have the 2021 academic standard declaration.
Yep, and still per the Wisconsin budget approval, we are required to make academic declaration. And so every year we do this in July, being prepared for upcoming school year. So the administration is recommending the board approve the following statement to identify the Merton Community School District people academic standards for the 2021 school year. So a board member would have to read the entire declaration regarding the motion.
I'll make a motion to identify the topic statement as the Merton Community School District people academic standards for the 2022-21 school year. The Merton Community School District is committed to using best work and rigorous academic standards that set the highest expectations for student performance and prepare students in the district for success in college and career development. In creating these standards, the district carefully looks at multiple sources to best prepare our students for future college and career success and then create standards that satisfy the needs of the Merton Community School District students. These sources include the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards, Exaggeration Science Standards on the Board, and other locally developed academic expectations.
Do you have a motion and a second if there are any discussion? All favor say aye.
Great, Casey.
Aye.
All at the same time, motions carried. We have school fees coming up next, action to set though.
So I did have a conversation with, we did not have a policy committee, not policy or finance committee, but I did talk to both Bill and Jennifer as members of the finance committee separately. But we took a look at our school fees from a year ago. There wasn't a reason to increase school fees as we take a look at this upcoming 2021 school year. So basically, the only change to school fees that we could possibly be looking at would be at intermediate food service level. In the past, it all depended on what entree you took, whether it was classic, hamburger, the pizza, the deli. There was a change in price. Given what we want to do from a food service kind of a documentation standpoint, and due to kind of the COVID situation, we want to keep kids moving as soon as, as part of our, kind of our food service plan. The plan is to just to have one set price for an intermediate school lunch instead of having a different tier based on the product. We do believe we've done an analysis of the food service program that says this doesn't put us in the hole or anything. It puts us backwards from many, many standpoint. So just setting a school price of $3.40 for an intermediate school student, that would include an entree, fruit, veggies. Obviously, you'll see in our plan that obviously all that is prepackaged and some things we'll get into that shortly later. But it'd be $3.40 for the price just to meet. So, so again, just looking for, as the administration, the finance committee are ready to report, make motion to approve the 2021 school fees as presented.
I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Phil, is there any discussion? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motions carried. We are on to the first draft of the policy changes, the Title J.
So again, sorry, they are, these policies are included in the board packet to be, and Katie, you have a paper copy. I did get them from our legal team right around 5:30. Jim would need to expand, I'll make up the documents in some sort of filter, I guess, pretty big. But ultimately, this year, the state of Wisconsin and the federal government has passed a new Title IX regulations. Title IX, we often accumulate ourselves to sports, kind of a balance, that's what you hear in the news from either the collegiate or the high school level. The Title IX also entails sexual harassment, discrimination, and the grievance procedure on all of those documentations that we move forward. And by August 14th, the district needs to adopt policies like this. Now, these policies, we do have all in place. We do have non-discrimination, we've got grievance, we've got formal complaints. And this is the most updated and required by our state of Wisconsin and the federal government. So you continue to receive federal grants and things like that too. So what you have in front of you is basically there's a district policy that is all entailed. Again, it's detailed, I spent about an hour with Bob Butler today. It's so detailed, WASB just finished it on Thursday. So it's taking a little bit while longer. You will find the policy, you will also find the administrative procedures and the district response as part of that. And then ultimately, there is a Title IX notice which we are required to then now post, which I do believe will be part of our student registration process and things like that too as well. These procedures are not only for students but for staff as well. We do outline our student Title IX coordinators are going to be our building principals, so for these student issue. And our employee Title IX coordinator will be Lori Larson and the backup will be me. The, our legal counsel does not recommend he be our primary Title IX coordinator because ultimately, as part of the grievance process, I am part of that. So only in extraordinary circumstance that they're from Lori, we go to Becca and Jay, and then to me or possibly an outside independent investigator as well too. So nothing really new from that standpoint. It's just kind of solidifying and tightening up some legal documentation that we need. So this is the first draft. Again, it is required that we have it by August 14th. And I apologize for the late notice from our school board standpoint. But I can take any question, but ultimately, the final reading would be hopefully August 3rd, the time, time our board is coming together scheduled prior to our recording meeting at the end of August. So maybe now then, if you guys wanted to take a peek of that, that would be fantastic. The one piece you don't see in there is I didn't have enough time to cross-reference our policies that include the student discrimination as well as the harassment discrimination because we have two different policies, one in our 4,000 series and one in our 5,000 series that will be cross-referenced in this policy as well.
I took a very brief look at them in the 30 seconds of speaking at our committee. A question that I had was, the wording in the document say that like for Jamie, in fact, that your primary role or something like that was for, you know, student issues and that's for Lori, that her primary role was for deployment issues. Can a, can a staff member vote to any one of the four of you for any issue? So depending on who they're comfortable with and all that, maybe they have to go to the primary person.
They, they would need to go, and this is all part of the training. And that will be part of, our staff will need to go through formal Title IX training. Our, our Title IX coordinators will go through a six to eight hour training. Sorry, everybody. Great, I found that out literally an hour ago. But ultimately, there is, we will be the intake person. For instance, if there's a primary school issue and they go to Becca. Becca will be trained to say, okay, thank you very much, this is a Title IX, so I'm going to forward you now to Lori Larson. So, so just to kind of keep things consistent that way, but again, that will all be part of the training, Phil. But just in case Lori is unable to, then ultimately Becca would be able to do that. But, you know, one of the reasons why Becca, obviously Jay are from the student side, but when we take from an employee standpoint, Lori supervises, you know, four to six employees. Whereas myself, Mr. Netashine, Lori and Becca supervise much more and many more employees from her standpoint too. So that's why I've been kind of went there too. But to answer your question, the direct supervisor who receives the complaint should go right to the Title IX coordinator, the appropriate person, whether that be students and or staff.
Okay. The second question is that hypothetically, there might be a situation where, you know, the coordinator is the one that, you know, the person has the grievance with or something, and so obviously needs to be, you know, a combination for that.
Correct. That's why, Phil, it would go to me. And then from that standpoint, I would have the right to say, okay, I need to hire a independent investigator, which, you know, we would try and bring in an outside person who's trained in Title IX policies and things like that too.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the annual changes. I guess just is there, are there any questions, Phil? It sounds like you have a couple of comments or questions.
I have one question, I guess. In the FCL work we were doing last year, there was talk about putting the vision and values in the handbook such that employees had to sign off on that specifically, if they're going through the process, signing off on their handbook. I think that's the thing that we talked about. And so I, I didn't see that specifically, there's a vision paragraph in there, but I didn't specifically see a, you know, vision and values signing off on like a one or two page thing. So do we want to include that? Do we want to say, oh, we're gonna, you know, not do that or we don't do that?
Yep, we can. Again, we can do it. Katie's saying yes. Sign with that? Okay.
Yeah.
So would you like, how would you like, would you like our administrative team to draft something? Do you want us to bring the SCL team together? What, would you like us?
I mean, I think, I think the way we had talked about it was basically like a pretty simple, like we have a one or a two page document of, with the vision and values on it, right? And then you need to have some just sentence of, you know, I'm, you know, signing up to actually, you know, live this through, at least at school. And so there would have to be, you know, a pair of, a sentence or something worded to that end. But I think for the most part, it's just a direct copy of the vision and values and then some sentence saying, I'm signing up to live that. But I think for the most part, it's just a direct copy of the vision values and then some sentence saying, I'm signing up to live that.
And I know we talked about it being in the handbook, but also a separate, it's a big handbook.
Yeah.
I don't want it to just get lost. And we talked about that being a concern. I know in one of those meetings, I don't know if it's at the beginning.
I think it should be a separate signature. I think it's, I think you should have to sign it once again. It should be part of the handbook process just because that's when they're doing this kind of stuff. But you sign, you know, the handbook is one signature page, or you have to write the whole handbook and I have all that. And then there's, you know, a second signature that you have to do that is, I read the vision of values, but I agree with those, I'm going to, you know, practice.
Okay. Okay. Well, what I'll do is I'll draft something and then share with the board for some feedback so we can give a first look. Typically, we do two looks at it. Everybody to kind of look at it and do that. So our first look will be August 3rd and then we can decide whether we need a special meeting. We'll probably get a meeting anyway, possibly. But we can have two looks at it, but our first look will be August 3rd. Okay? All right.
Can show that it will go into effect for this school year.
For this school year, yep, yep. Certainly.
Get it waiting for it. For the 29th.
Nope, that's fine. I think there'll be some things that we probably have to need for possibly for real, maybe these things are, yeah, we can move quickly as well too. So we'll do a first look August 3rd and then we'll go for that.
Okay, we are literally preliminary plan for all real length discussion.
Okay, so obviously, obviously, we sent it out to our parent community. I'm excited, can we take a look at a timeline? And I'm not sure. Obviously, a lot of people have it and if there's any questions from this to the school board standpoint, you can certainly bring that up too as well. A couple of things that you continue to collaborate with, we have another meeting as it relates to, uh, you know, our entire collaborative. Okay, so just regarding masks, a lot, a lot of conversations around student masks. Staff PPE, what do we do and things like that. Right now, obviously, you've seen our plans, most of you. Our plans are to continue to ask staff and to require staff to wear masks for some sort of face covering. Whether that's a shield, we are looking, now you have a couple of different kinds of shields. We're also looking to invest in ones that, that are not open on the bottom, but just open to the top, to think about propels and things like that. But offering multiple opportunities, whether it be staff, we've got these, I've got some other masks, some in some different designs for our staff. But it would be when they are in communal areas or with students or with another staff member, we would require masks upon the return too as well. How many people want to wear gloves? We have, we have those kinds of gloves too. At this time, we are not, or we're not mandated, and the world continues to change, but we're not thinking about double PPE, whether it be a mask and a face shield. Ultimately, face shields are readily available, kind of the time you see in hospitals. And the ones that we, that you see in the hospitals are the kinds that we have. They say face mask on them, they're out of that. So we will be offering, and if people want to bring their own, they certainly can bring their own mask that they're most comfortable with too as well. So we, we are, our number one priority is when we start thinking about our instructional design is keeping kids six feet apart. We will have markings on the floor, John and his team are going around. We are pulling in all, as much furniture as possible as out and only putting necessary furniture back in. We have it all figured out right now and according to our calculations and what we've done, we will be able to, even assuming that we have 10% of our population want to go virtual right from the, right from the start. We do have a plan to have every student six feet apart throughout the district. Now, that may mean the, the room is only filled with student desks, a student table, a chair or some other alternate seating. That will be the number one priority. We will take a look at what we, and we're blessed with a facility to be able to do that. Jay and Becca are working with their teams to talk about room locations, taking advantage of large group areas where we happen to spread out based on either class size or just the right thing to do because we can spread out accordingly too. So our number one priority when we put things back in classrooms will be to keep kids six feet apart as much as possible. Now, when I say as much as possible, we will lay out a seating plan that has everybody six feet apart. Now, we know four payers, five payers, you know, are, are active people, they're active learners. So we will continue to keep procedures and, and things in place to assist our staff and assist our families, making sure that we can maintain that six feet as much as possible. Uh, the biggest question that I get is quarantine procedures. Gail Ward has put together, you know, we think of it says COVID-19 and student health. Uh, and we've also shared some of the graphics and some of the charts that go along with quarantining. Our goal is to not have anyone self-quarantined because of something that happened at school. That is the number one goal, hence the six feet apart. So if a student has COVID in a, you know, let's just say ninth grade classroom, they were in the American Community School District, you know, they don't want to take anybody. But if you're six feet apart and if you don't have close contact with 15 minutes or more throughout the day, you will not have to self-quarantined. So we will be working with our teachers and we are kind of changing some teaching assignments around such that our teachers can maximize that, that up to 15 minutes. And obviously, we don't want to push it, but to be able to personalize instruction through individual, through burn. If we have an opportunity to do small groups based on the facility size and break, and if we do have small groups, we'll be taking a look at what kind of safety protections we have to give. So when you have three kids who are about four or five feet apart, what more safety precautions can we have to do? So we'll continue to work with our staff on what it's like now to basically teach almost six feet apart for the majority of the time. So we'll be putting more and more procedures in place for that. And speaking of our staff, and it's something that we are really strongly considering is to kind of give us a little bit of extra time before the school year to bring our staff onto campus a couple of days earlier than the August 24th time that we're thinking. I'm thinking about bringing them back the 18th, 19th to kind of give us a little bit more time so we can prepare not only for face-to-face instruction, but for the virtual instruction, which we know at some time may happen. And we know it's going to happen right from the start, given 10% of our population approximately is what we're anticipating. We're going to start in that virtual world. So how do we continue to utilize our professional development days before school to prepare for something that may happen? Could be immediate, we don't know, based on what's happening in the world. And but again, we are going to continue to plan and really, because our staff needs to continue to, and we will be setting out clear expectations for our staff about and kind of segmenting some of the virtual learning. Our team is working on that. But at the same time, creating an evaluation in a rubric that's tied into Danielson model that is specific to virtual teaching as well. Because if we do have to go to either 100% virtual, and that would be pretty much what happened last time when either the state of Wisconsin, Waukesha County and/or our school district made the decision to say, hey, no students in school, we would have to be prepared for that. We're also preparing for the case that either, again, the state, the local county or us decide to say, hey, we can only have 50% of our people on campus, or we should do that, or no, no more than 10 in a room. We are preparing a plan that would be for that too as well. We are considering, you know, obviously grouping families up. Uh, our family survey, which was shared to our public too as well, shared that the best cohort option that was most popular was creating a cohort that came Monday, Tuesday, as well as Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being 100% virtual regardless of cohort period. So we know what, what that means and we will continue to, and we kind of outlined it in the, in the document, that just using AJ Sutter, AJ Sutter's class would all come onto campus at one time. We are looking at making sure that we are trying not to have our teachers work in both a virtual world and a live world as least as possible. Hence the reason for students who choose 100% virtual to start with are basically being live in the classroom via this. So if a child wants to go to lunch with their best friend, they're going to lunch with their best friend right here, just like this. And you've seen our lunch plans. We do plan on utilizing our large group spaces, whether that be the gymnasium, the large group areas, to make sure that kids can get out of their classrooms and go eat. They will be six feet apart. John and Mary Alonsky and Becca and Jay will continue to work on basically, you know, putting some sort of logo or decal down on the, on the cafeteria tables where people should can sit, which is six feet apart. So we have a plan to feed approximately 100 students at a time, which will add a little bit more at the intermediate school because we've got a group of about 110. And we'll make sure that we get them out of the classrooms to do so. You'll also see in our plan, we have created recess scenarios as well. Our recess, again, given, you know, the guidelines and working with other school districts and the health department, we are going to, you know, do as best we can, make sure that the playgrounds are monitored and things, but we're going to not cohort them outside. Our goal is to just let them run and do what they need to during that time. It's about a 15 to 20 minute period. So we're not just going to zone them. We've had conversations about that, but at this time, we are recommending that during first grade recess, first grade recess happens just for first grade. They're outside being supervised just for first grade with, with common sense restrictions. You know, we'll have to take a look at what kind of playground balls, if we can use balls, what kind of other things we can do. But again, we'll continue to work forward through and work with our staff to say, what are some of those expectations? But again, that will all be part of our, our final plan, which will be delivered to you guys on the 32 as well. Or not the final, not the 32. Another draft, I should say. All right. So, um, so those are kind of some of the big areas from a transportation standpoint. You know, we identified, we are going to be asking kids and requiring kids to wear masks. We are in a unique situation where we're a three-tier bus system to maximize our transportation dollars. So students who travel on our buses, also before us is Arrowhead, Northlake. We've got Richmond School, we've got Swallow School. So we are going to be requiring, there'll be hand sanitizing stations on each bus. There will be plexiglass station for the driver to make sure that we can, again, try to be as safe as possible for the driver. But we will load, we will have some other bus safety precautions, load from the back. Students who are a common family will sit together. And we will outline all of those things in the upcoming dates. Tomorrow, I've got a K-12 Waukesha County bus meeting. And then next week, we'll be finalizing some dowsing and transportation procedures too, that will be able to kind of easily do inform our parents and stuff like that as well. Uh, the biggest question is, is what happens if a kid comes to the bus stop without a mask or informatically unable? If they're medically unable, we will put them in the front of the bus. And if they do not come with a mask, we will have a mask provided for them. So that is our plan right now for transportation again. With that, we have a staggered, you know, bus times, kids coming in, kids leaving. We have staggered times throughout the day. We've got a recess and a lunchroom plan about some people are not having this interaction, this crossover between grade levels and trying to keep kids as far as separated as possible. But we'll identify different doors and we continue to work on those structures and finalize over about 95% of the volume of that too as well. So we'll have some, some things that we'll be able to showcase and we'll prepare our staff with that too as well. So also you'll find in there, there's some mitigation efforts that have been worked with Mr. Netashine on, as well as our team re-highlighting some of the specific things, all the way from plexiglass in our office areas to, you know, some of the other things that we're, we're looking at doing, our bathroom cleaning, as well as some of the other technology that we'll be using on a daily basis. We do not, we are not planning on and will not, at least this time, you don't think it's probably the best idea to do any aerosol cleaning while students are on campus as well. So that'll all be done in the evening when we say aerosol, going in with our Clorox 360s with our Titan sprayers that basically there's a disinfectant sanitizing agent that goes and kills everything within 10 to 15 minutes. But obviously, it's a spray. So our staff is trained on that and that will all happen when staff and students are not in the building or not in that area to be able to be clean. So we have the capacity to do that and we certainly will. Obviously, through the day, we'll be sanitizing, cleaning our bathrooms as best as possible. We've got that technology to be able to, to go in there and get that quickly too as well, as much as possible from there too. We do have, we continue to, to build stock on hand sanitizer and on soap. Because obviously, we know we are going to be going through that very, very quickly. So as well as Clorox 360 and all those other disinfecting agents that we use, things wise, we continue to try to order as much as we can in preparation for this upcoming situation that we're getting into as well. So we have created a website too, just kind of a one-stop shop for people to go to. We'll continue to keep on, not only our staff, but from, obviously, we know that we have a community meeting next Monday at 6 o'clock, we'll be in the, uh, the gymnasium. Again, we'll, we'll spread on out, we'll, we'll have a presentation ready and kind of walk through some general things and then really get into details with our community. This upcoming week, tomorrow and Thursday, we have two meetings, two staff meetings where people can come in and ask questions. And one will be live here, the other one will be virtually if they want to, if they want to. We do have, internally, we do have a staff frequently asked questions list. So if someone asks a question, we add it right to that document so everybody can see. And we continue to push that out to our staff as well. So again, trying to gather as much information about questions and trying to make people feel as, as good as possible and as prepared as possible as we can. We go from a school district, obviously, we're going to be asking for some parent decisions, whether they're going to be virtual or whether they're going to be coming on and what they would prepare for. So we can prepare for virtual students as well as face-to-face students. Because if we have 10 to 15%, or if we have three kids out of the class, that significantly makes a big difference with the amount of spacing we can be either spaced out more or we can put a smaller table in. So again, there's some things that we'd like to find with our families and not wait till August 27th to tell us whether we're going to be virtual or not. Now, that would be a goal of, again, the world continues to change quickly. But ultimately, hopefully by the middle of August, we could have a better discussion, a better idea about what we could do on September 1st as well. So continued more to come from, from those things. Uh, the response from the families has been very positive, a lot of thankings for this too. But we hope to just continue to keep people in the loop and give them as much information as what we have, be as transparent as possible.
Any questions?
I had a question about the 50% model.
Yep.
So in the 50% model, you used AJ as the example previously, so let's use him again. On Monday, Thursday, is, are all of the kids in AJ's classroom and then, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, all the kids are in the classroom and then Thursday, Friday, all of his kids are virtual? Or is it Monday, Tuesday, half of his class is in person and half is virtual? And then Thursday, Friday, it's flipped?
Nope. So AJ's class, we'll use AJ as an example. Uh, AJ's class will all be on campus Monday and Tuesday, assuming he's in the Monday, Tuesday cohort. There will be 50% of his kids in his classroom and then they will be, the other 50% will be in an adjacent classroom being supervised. That way AJ can focus on face-to-face teaching on Monday and Tuesday. We will supply supervision in that, that supervised class. So AJ, what, half of his class will be in his classroom and then to an adjacent classroom will be, will be the other half of his kids. So AJ will maneuver between both classrooms. So that way, he can continue just to focus on live teaching Monday and Tuesday. And Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, he can focus on virtual. So when we think of fourth grade, for example, AJ and let's say Lori Lewdowski, their two classrooms would be on campus together Monday, Tuesday, split across to two fourth grade rooms. And we would then continue to kind of have our teachers bounce back and forth. We need, we will probably livestream many lessons into the other classroom. So we can continue that, that up to date and that up to speed, so he's not delivering the lesson twice. So our goal would be to have some, some technology that would then be portraying into the other classroom. So, uh, and we've arranged it such that the class lists would then be arranged so for a student in AJ's class, if there's a sibling, the sibling also would travel on Monday, Tuesday as well.
How does the 50%?
Yep.
How does the 50% time look at the middle school for seventh and eighth grade?
Okay, that's a lot of work. For fifth and sixth grade, it's the same thing, fifth and sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade. Um, we have that model. Okay, that gets a little bit dicey here because we have contentary people. Basically, it would operate in that same kind of cohort model, but we would have half of our staff live in, in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we would bring another set of staff up to date. I'm going to break that up. That's a plan we're still final, but I wouldn't want to say finalizing it, but we've got it in a nice little spreadsheet here. Jay, what's that called? 50% model, there it is.
Yeah, I think that's what it's called.
Okay. Uh, I'll share this with our virtual. This is going to require a lot more explanation. Share this quick and then I'll pull it up there as well. Because we've got student sign and we also have a, uh, teacher sign to that too as well. But same thing again, trying to really mesh up families so that if you're a sibling, again, doing as best as we can to make sure that sibling groups are out this, on this, in the same cohort Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday cohort.
What would get us into this scenario?
What would get us into this scenario? Whether it be a state mandate at 50%? What would get us into this scenario, um whether it be a state mandate at fifty percent capacity, a local mandate at fifty percent. Or it is a decision that can be made by the school board. For instance, Pawnee School District, this is what they're proposing to start a year with. And now they're in like a fifty percent cohort. Now, at a high school level, you just basically go half the alphabet, A through K. We, we didn't want to do that, we tried to figure out a way such that if eight Russ. Was in a cohort and there's a littler Russ running around. They would be in the same cohort on Monday, Tuesday, or another Monday, Tuesday if I had a third grade child. Cause if we did alphabet. Then eight and Russ would be in, could be in a different cohort than the sibling. Well, we, we've already identified those people as well, so we have. We, we've. Well, part of that, uh Miss Becca's time has started this all, so she gets the, the gold star there. All right.
So I guess in, in light of uh probably comments earlier from, I didn't catch the gentleman's name at the beginning of the meeting, but. There are the plan that, that Dr. Ross was talking about, there's actually three plans, right? There's a hundred percent on, you know, in person, there's a fifty-fifty, and there's a hundred percent virtual. Um and so. Ron, Becca, Jay, and a host of other people have been spending a huge amount of time developing these plans over the last plus, honestly. Um. And on the twenty-seventh, which is the week from today, we're going to have a community forum where our parents can come. Will, you know, present the plans and you'll gather feedback on, on what parents think. Um and then a week after that, the school board will decide what direction we want to move forward.
And everything can change. If you make a mandate of. Correct, correct, yeah, yeah, and I don't think it's going to come from Waukesha County, the way it sounds. So, okay, so I shared this with uh. So in this model, we take into account. The uh, the cohort of a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh the difference here with that, it's very different than, for instance, the A.J. or a K-four or a K-six teacher. Is is the teacher would be here all day Monday, Tuesday. In seventh and eighth grade, again, just because we wanted to make sure, another driving factor was how do we get siblings together? Truly, because I, I think that would be a mess, if you had an eighth grade sibling and you're fourth grade, fourth grader were on different schedules, I think that's a mess, so. Um so we've worked it out such that um if you're a cohort teacher. I mean, yeah, I have, we've got cohorts, we've set them into cohorts, again, these classrooms, if we do go virtually, are a little bit bigger. Uh from a standpoint of this, because they would be virtual and we can handle a little bit bigger class size. But basically, if we take a look at, um you know, for instance, seventh grade, seventh grade Michelle and seventh grade Melissa. They would be on campus. As would, actually, no, our entire seventh grade, Jay, our seventh grade would be on campus. I do believe. Um. So we've got one seventh grade group and two eighth grade groups, so. Again, we'll, we'll write a verbal explanation, we've got a written explanation to this, but if you're a staff member, a seventh grade teacher. Um if your cohort group was on Monday, Tuesday. You would be teaching live in the morning and virtually in the afternoon. And it flips when we go, or it stays consistent that way because we get free deference, just, just, just uh. So we would identify people who would be in the AM and then who would be in the PM. Uh this needs some explanation and more, more words than anything uh to kind of highlight that too as well. There's two individuals, uh Matt Pomeroy, Spanish, who probably ever be on campus uh every day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, just because they get infused into it, so. Um it took us about two, three hours to figure this plan out, uh to be able to go to, so. Jennifer, why don't we put this out on the, uh on our website with a more detailed explanation, uh instead of trying to, because it's a, we'll figure that out as a team. But if you're a seventh grader or eighth grader, it still works out Monday, Tuesday, uh or Thursday, Friday. It's just a little bit more complicated for staff. So from a kid's standpoint. Yeah, go ahead.
You're going to be on, you're going to be A-four or B-four, you'd be on for students Monday, Tuesday, and then virtually Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. For staff, the change is, is that they're always on campus just AM or PM when you're on or off campus. To hell with the bandwidth, I think that's what I.
Yep. Correct.
Is that right, okay.
Yeah.
There's a layer in for staff, the students still stay at the Monday, Tuesday, everyone virtual, or on Thursday, Friday.
So the student experience won't change, they'll still have their same teacher fly. The staff experience is they're coming onto campus four days a week compared to a kindergarten and sixth grade teacher would be coming out of campus two weeks. And with that, we were anticipating, our hope was to bring our staff in on campus during virtual time. So we were a hundred percent virtual or we chose to go fifty percent virtual. Um our bandwidth, and this is the biggest issue that schools are running into, is is the amount of bandwidth that you can handle. With all the information coming in and then all the information that we have to get out to make it effective in the learning program too as well, so. That's why we are going to be asking our staff, for those who have handled it, we had a few staff members and we've been asking and surveying them to say, who needs to come onto campus? For bandwidth reasons and obviously that would be, you know, bring them on, but we're not able to accommodate every teacher coming onto campus with the, the big pipeline. Any other questions? Any else? Go ahead, I think we've got all of everything's there and again, if you have any other questions, we'll see everybody on July twenty-seventh. Those are community forums, that'll be an opportunity for school board members to listen to the community and, and we. We've been able to respond uh as best as possible, there's some things that we still continue to work out from a community resource standpoint. Um we need to talk to our staff and find out uh during virtual teaching, uh obviously, if you're going to want them live per our plan. We are going to be offering onsite school age childcare here through after-school programs, so we'll need to find out how many staff members want to take advantage of that sweeping plan. Uh then we also need to find out how many staff members are able to work virtually, given the standpoint that if they have their own children or there's some other situations. Uh we need to continue to, to work with them too as well, as well as answer the question about substitutes. Uh you know, just had a conversation with one of our instructional specialists today, it's like, uh we need to talk about what happens if I'm sick. If a teacher's sick, okay, so that's on our agenda tomorrow, so. Uh got some, some pretty good ideas what we can do there, but that'll be something, what happens if it's a pine absence versus I wake up not feeling well. Like, that happens, you know, every day as per one, so. Lots of things to continue to work out, but those things will continue to pop up, we'll continue to work with our community and our staff and with our school. Okay, we are on to future meetings and Jendai. We've got uh twenty-seventh, just. And the third, we would have. Handbook readings and. Discussion on the reopening. Did, did we want to set something up maybe like the seventeenth as well, kind of, you have the third, the two weeks later, seventeenth? And then we've got something on the twenty, that would be the thirty-first or the twenty-fourth. Just to kind of as a placeholder, if we need to have another meeting. Adjusting case, yep. I don't know if I'll be back, but uh if uh. Things have changed on that issue, so I, I should be back. Okay, okay, so if we did August seventeenth. Jennifer, are we still good with the six o'clock start at that time, or do we go back?
Um, can't have a look.
Can't have a look.
We need to buy the. Seventeenth. I'm not back, but I might not be here, so. There's that. I'm not back at work, so it's, it probably will be fine, but I would be with my parents if we're allowed to go there.
You're allowed to go there. Would you be able to join in virtually if we had to?
If I go sit in the library parking lot, because they don't have Wi-Fi there in rural location.
So should we set something up with seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. 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 So August seventeenth, that would just be a special for me to talk about all reopening or student, and more, just to, any late hires as well, if we need to adjust some things to as well, okay. Any agenda? I think uh all the things that Mr. Laddens brought up are going to be discussed on twenty-seventh and then uh. Right, and just further from, from that, the, the one piece that is legally, uh there's, you know, some, starting to get some more deferring opinions from. Uh it obviously depends on which attorney you talk to, but uh it is a freedom of speech, expression, and religion issue. Not a Fourth Amendment or a Fifth Amendment, it comes down to freedom of expression, uh freedom of speech, it's just like holding. Ask is a freedom of speech thing, now it's a pandemic, so there's some things that might come into play there, but uh there's some court cases that are being explored. That would allow schools to mandate and enforce if that was the direction of the district, so I'll continue to keep everybody up to date. Um as we talked about, kind of from a K-12 Waukesha County standpoint, the mask piece is going to be probably the one that continues to get drug out because things continue to change. Um most recently now, I think by the end of this week, it's going to be difficult to walk into a connoisseur without being required to wear masks. As well, so um you know, we've seen what happened in Manominee Falls, as we, it's summer or fall also. Lots of things will continue to change and there might be some more direction that we have no control over, but ultimately. Uh I believe that there will be a lot of control that we have that our school board will have to make those decisions on. And to Phil's point, uh all the way from zero percent, fifty percent, two hundred percent, everything's on the table, masks are on the table. Unless it gets put on the table for us and then we have to comply, so. There's nothing else, we've got motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All second.
Was that Jennifer, Jennifer, yeah, we should have a second, one favor that say hi.
Hi.
All the same time. Need to adjourn, thank you. Uh Jennifer, I'll drop all the contracts off for you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
All right, for me to.